Okay, we'll come to order. This is the study session for September 13th for the City Council in Newport Beach. City Clerk?
The record will reflect that Council members Daigle and Nichols are absent, excused.
Thank you. Clarification of items on the consent agenda, Mr. Ridgeway?
Nothing.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
No.
Mr. Zansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Stalich? Nothing. I have nothing. Great. City Clerk?
Item two, regulation of electric personal assistive mobility devices, Segway.
Dan Oll is going to go over the staff report on his side.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. We brought the, excuse me, the Segway issue back before the City Council. As you may recall, we were in front of you back in April. We've brought a proposed ordinance back in front of the Council if you choose to provide any regulations at all. And the ordinance will effectively ban them in certain locations, predominantly where there's heavy pedestrian traffic on the boardwalk, the bayfront sidewalk around Balboa Island, Edgewater Plaza, the piers, and on the beaches. We've also added a provision to indicate that there's no unsafe movements permitted, much like we did with the bicycles and the skateboards, and also to indicate that you can't pass others unless it's safe to do so. So the ordinances in front of you, there have been a number of folks that have opposed them, have sent some materials, and I believe those have been provided to you from the Clerk's office. We did receive one letter, I believe it went to the Mayor, indicating that there was someone that was in support of those. I believe there are individuals from the Segway community here tonight to speak as well, and then we'll await directions from Council on what you'd like us to do.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Buena Vista, do you allow them there? I just want to make an observation. We don't even allow bikes on Buena Vista, nor Edgewater.
Right now, it's just Edgewater Plaza, which I believe is the area from Main Street to about A Street. If you wish us to extend it down to Buena Vista, we can add that.
Yeah, it would need to be done. Again, no bikes are even allowed on Buena Vista at this time.
Two suggestions, if the Council does decide that it wishes regulations. We ask the Council to consider whether or not they'd like us to ban them on Marine Avenue on Balboa Island, as well as adding an exemption for disabled persons. I did speak with a young lady today from Berkeley. We had originally thought of adding an exemption for disabled, but couldn't come up with a workable definition until today. So we would suggest that that be added as an exemption as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask another question.
Sure.
Just about three weeks ago, I do believe, on the national news, and I don't know, at the six o'clock news, and I'm not sure if it was Channel 7, 4, or 2, they had an article on Segways on the Mall in Washington, DC, where they, obviously because of the wide walkways and what have you, they're very popular. And I caught at the end of it, and I challenged anybody, that they're very popular, but ironically, they actually, while they're allowing them there, they are not allowing them for disabled, for the obvious reason that disabled, really, they're concerned about their ability to operate a Segway. So maybe you could look into that, but again, it was Washington, DC, and rather than making exceptions for the disabled, they actually precluded disabled.
Yeah, we could look into that.
But, Mr. Councilman Ridgeway, we don't restrict disableds from driving cars. So why should you restrict them from, I mean, why shouldn't we consider a disabled individual being able to operate a Segway?
Perhaps you should review the ordinance that is back in Washington, DC. Again, I didn't make that, and they were just reporting it, but it was curious to me that, for whatever reason, they were preventing disabled from riding those. And I may have heard that wrong. I'm gonna qualify my comment. I had three kids yelling at the time I heard that, so my apologies if I'm wrong.
I have a question.
Sure.
How many Segways are we talking about here?
I don't know how many there are that exist in city limits. I'm not aware of any reported accidents to myself. Perhaps Lieutenant Yezzi would know, but I'm not aware of any accidents.
Talking about 100, 500, 1,000?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
They are used, and they do have these tours on the Peninsula, and I see them all the time. And there's usually somewhere between five and maybe eight just queued in a line going down the boardwalk. So that's what I've seen. Singularly, I actually haven't seen any singles out there. What I've seen them is like, we have a caravan here, you know, but I've seen these tour caravans that they have down there.
It's my understanding that we probably have less than 15 in the city. Well, only because this is our second study session, so I understand it. Then we're gonna have to come back with an ordinance for, I mean, is this the most important thing? That we're taking up TV time and all these crowded people coming here, talking about Segways? I have more of an agenda issue. I know, but there's a lot of things to police in this town, but this is, we'll have three meetings to deal with 15 vehicles in the city, potential Segways. I'm just wondering, with all the things before us in the city, is this warrant this much attention? And I guess the point is, we've already started, now we have to finish what we started. But in the future, maybe we can focus and use this thing. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I guess that's a subject for tonight's study session. If the Council doesn't feel that they want to come back on any type of an ordinance, then they can.
Oh, no, no, no. It's more how things like this absorb our time with the priorities we have before us as a City Council. And, you know, but if you're telling me that this is an important safety issue we have to deal with, then that's the answer. That's fine. It's good enough for me.
I'd like to make one observation there. If you're in my district and you deal with the boardwalk and Edgewater and Buena Vista, it's a pretty important project to us, number one. Number two, we don't discriminate between whether it's one or 100. I would use as an example, in your neighborhood, where we did speed bumps on one little street, and we spent two hours going over that. And in my mind, we shouldn't have done it, but nonetheless, it was one family over one issue. So we don't discriminate here. And it is an important issue on the Peninsula, quite candidly, because the boardwalk, and Mr. Heffernan, I would love for you to come down in the summertime and visit with me on the boardwalk, anytime on a Saturday or Sunday, or any evening for that matter, and see the crowded conditions that exist down there.
No, it is crowded, but I think a guy on a set of inline skates going 20 miles an hour is probably more of a risk to me. And that's why we don't potentially walk on the boardwalk, because they're just, you know, they're who they are. I mean, so if we're gonna be dealing with these sorts of issues, let's deal with all of them. But the point is, it's your district, Mr. Ridgeway. That's a good call. I'm glad we're doing it. Let's proceed.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Zansky.
Dan, do we restrict, because I sense that the issue here is not, is the type of vehicle it is, that it's motorized, and historically or traditionally, we haven't allowed motorized vehicles in these areas. But we do allow, I mean, if someone wanted to take their motorized wheelchair down the boardwalk, they wouldn't be prevented, would they?
Right. We make exceptions for that.
For disabled and a wheelchair?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding is only about a half a dozen even owners of these.
Okay, what's next? I mean, is staff report done at this point?
Yes.
We're gonna open up to public comment?
Correct.
Good. All right, public comment. Come on down. Thanks.
My name is Stuart McKenzie, and I live on the Peninsula, on West Bay. I've been a resident for a long time, over 50 years, and I've used that boardwalk, Oceanfront Walk, for years. I use it often. I walk, I'm still going back now to where I'm walking almost every day again. And I've saw, on two occasions, I've seen a Segway, or Segway, on that boardwalk. And at that particular time, and this is in the morning, not early, but you still, there are a lot of bicycles though down there, and they're legal, but they, some of them go a little faster. But it's always crowded, and it's tough, and you put one of those things, it's motorized, and you hit it, or it gets out of your way, you gotta get out of your way. You see that coming, you got out of your way. I'm stubborn, and I usually try to stay that I'm on the right side of the road, and those bikes come down, they gotta avoid me. The other thing, you made a comment about the disabled. I investigated that, and I may be wrong, but a disabled person who carries a license as a disabled person can use any vehicle that they can use, can use that area. And I'm sure in Washington, DC, if somebody were going down in a Segway, and he had a placard or had a possession of a thing, they would not stop him. I think the federal law says that. And those are the two things that I want to make a comment on. Thank you.
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Dorothy Beek. I live on the oceanfront on the Peninsula. I think the proposed ordinance covers the situation very well. I hope you will adopt it. There may not be many Segways now, but they're apt to proliferate in years to come, and I think we should be ready for it. It's a very good ordinance, and I hope you'll pass it. And thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon. I'm W.R. Dildine. I reside in the 300 East Block of Balboa Boulevard. I've been asked, on behalf of the Central Newport Beach Community Association, to address my concerns and their concerns. One of the first things is the areas as currently defined, Bayfront Sidewalk and Edgewater Place. I'm in disagreement, after obtaining maps from the GSI segment here on Edgewater Place. They refer in here that Edgewater Place goes from Coronado Street to A Street. A Street to Main Street is the 800 Block of East Bay. On this map that's been provided to me, from Main Street down to Cypress, where the old Christians' Caribbean is, that is Edgewater Place, that sidewalk underneath the Caribbean, the old Christians' hut, is not public. There is an easement that was granted to the city, apparently. I've not read it, in February of '43. Taking off from Fernando down to Island, that is East Edgewater. From Island to Lindo is West Edgewater, and then on out to Bay is Buena Vista Boulevard. I will leave this with staff, the sort of desire. My ideas of what has been intended here, somebody's been concerned about the island. I think if you're looking at Balboa Island, our friends across the bay, that you have East Bayfront, North Bayfront, South Bayfront, and Grand Canal as walkways. On the Balboa Peninsula, those walkways facing the water and the sand, we have the 200 Block and 19th Street, the 1800 Block of West Bay, and of course, I've already alluded to Buena Vista, East Edgewater, West, or whatnot. The question whether you can restrict, in my opinion, the easement under Fernando, or from Fernando to Cypress, is questionable. I question why the word pedestrian is being taken out of the vehicle code section. City Attorney's Office had an explanation there to me, and let the trial attorneys later on decide that. Under the exceptions here, Section 1258020, I thought that devices operated by disabled persons would be able to go into these areas. Back over to the definition of disabled person, according to the new driver's handbook by the DMV, all of them were issued pocket, or are to be issued pocket identification cards with that qualification as of July 1st this year. In reference to the tours, they can only be conducted on sidewalks six foot or wider. I'm fully supportive of that. At least I'm not gonna have tours coming by my front door. Walking my neighborhood Saturday morning, in the old Balboa section, we have many small sidewalks. I found one, with my tape measure, there was only 28 inches between the property line, which was a wall, and a telephone pole, utility pole. So we do have concerns. One of the things, penalties, any person violating the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of an infraction. There's also provision for the Police Department to cite these things for mechanical violations in the vehicle code. Now, I made quite a study of the history of how these things came about. It was in August of '01 that Segway went to the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration and convinced them that these were pedestrians. And since that time, they've gone through approximately 40 states and enacted legislation. This original bill, when it came out, they had two vehicles. One that they were, appears to be from written testimony that I have here, printed testimony taken off the web, that they would go 20 miles an hour, and they had a personal, and they had a commercial industrial. At that time, from the records, from the assembly, there appeared to be no accuracy of really what they had, that the industrial commercial was in the development stages. Since that time, on the net, can pick up, they've come out with four, three new models. They have a golf transporter, they call it. They have a cross-terrain, and they have their commercial, their personal. I think we're concerned with the personal, and we should limit, back under the definition of what these things are, alphabet soup, nomenclature, I guess my time's about up, that I would highly like to suggest that we have a maximum footprint. The personnel model, 22 inches, will clear. The highway transporter, or the cross-terrain transporter, it's over half of the width of a five-foot sidewalk. Many of our sidewalks, measured from property liner wall or planter to face a curb or five foot, there are others five foot back. But I think we definitely need to protect the people walking on the sidewalk. And through the testimony before the state, your League of California Cities, before the bill was first heard, came out that they were vastly concerned that these things could travel five times faster than the average fast walker. Later, they reduced it to 12 and a half, when they were confronted in committee, as to the actual speed. And there have been many papers that I have seen that have concern about this impact of up to 280 so pounds striking into somebody that's at a walking speed. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. My name's Matt Delita. I'm Director of Regulatory Bor Segway LLC located in New Hampshire. My one criticism is that you're not conducting this meeting in the dead of winter, so I could travel from the East Coast and enjoy your beautiful city, and it is beautiful. I'm not from here, and so it would be presumptuous for me to dismiss any concern that's being raised by a citizen regarding our product. What I do know is our company and our commitment to building a product that is safe, enjoyable, and environmentally friendly. If you look at our website, we target the product to adults, and we target it and market it as a serious transportation device for short-distance travel. We all know the precarious situation that this country and the world is in. We're paying $3 a gallon for gasoline. We've almost used up about 50% of the world's oil supply. New ideas, innovations, need to come forward, and we're one such company. Let me just say a few other things. One, the law governing Segways here in California was passed in 2002. And I believe that the half dozen or so Segways that are here, or were here and are being used by residents, were sold prior to the dealer opening his doors just very recently, in 2005. So there was three years of use of the product here in Newport Beach. And I don't believe there was ever an incident with those being used. And yes, we do have a dealer here now, and I think it's exciting. I think it now brings Newport Beach into the cusp of deciding whether this is something for the future. And yes, he is conducting guided tours, as well as many of our other dealers. And they've been well documented in Newsweek, and Time, and the New York Times, as being very successful, as actually a draw to tourism. So I would look at that as being sort of a positive. I know you already have enough tourists here, but I think anything that you can do to keep them here, to keep spending their money here, might be a good thing for the revenues. And I know our dealer, who is here, has a suggestion as well during off-peak hours, during your off-season, to conduct the tours in these areas that might be prohibited during the on-season. Let me just address Councilman Ridgeway, your comment about Washington, DC. I've directed all of the state regulations. Washington, DC allows Segways on all sidewalks, regardless of whether you're able or disabled. What you might have heard was, the Metro, their subway system, recently passed a regulation that allows a person, at any time, to bring a Segway on to their mass transit. They did, though, however, put a few caveats in that the numbers would be limited during rush hour. However, those that were disabled, had a placard, could be allowed on the trains at any time. So I think that's what you might have heard, because I don't know of any other issue in Washington, DC. I would only say that it's exciting times for any new technology. I know when any new technology is introduced into an environment, there's going to be a lot of questions. There's gonna be a lot of concerns. But I think if you look at the history of our company, what we've done in the past, our dealers that we've signed, and their commitment in introducing the product in a very slow, educated way, and that many people here who dismiss it out of hand, might actually, if they take a look at it, might see its value, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but someday. And so I would hope you just take a step back, think about the last three years where you've had Segways here. Think about the last five months that you've had a dealer here. And just maybe think about a more rational approach. And again, I'm not being presumptuous, or maybe I am being presumptuous when I ask you to be rational, because I'm not from here. But I would just have you take a look at the facts, and the facts, I think, are pretty positive for at least the device. And certainly, if there is a problem in the future, and we learn about it, we'll be right here with you, saying, okay, there is a problem, we need to do something about it. And just lastly, I would also look at, if you're going to restrict it from other areas or in sidewalks, maybe rather than just prohibiting them entirely from that area, you think about allowing them in the bike lanes, if the bike lanes exist in that area. I think bicyclists would be happy to share that space with Segways. Anything that gets people out of cars, I think they would approve.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Louise Funenburg. I'm President of Central Newport Beach Community Association. And I would like to see that you pass the ordinance. We, as you know, are the oldest part of the city. Our streets, as was brought out by Mr. Dildine, if you measure them, are very narrow. This bike path that the young gentleman talked about is shared by walkers and other people. We don't have a bike lane on the boardwalk. I would also like to be sure that you restrict these vehicles from any street that already has, any sidewalk that already has restrictions on bicycles. Buena Vista, Edgewater, all of these areas. If you measure our sidewalks, they're too small. This might be a wonderful thing in a nice, brand-new city, but we're not a brand-new city. We're 100 years old, and we have to deal with the 100-year oldness of our area in which we're living. And it's the safety factor. I do know of an accident where a gentleman had his foot run over by one of these things. And so I can't say that he's badly injured, but I do say that it will startle any of the little old ladies like myself to have one of these Segways come up behind you. Our hearing isn't as good as it used to be, and we don't get out of the way as fast as we should. I don't walk the boardwalk, because I can't jump out of the way of the bicycles. And if you know the boardwalk, it's divided in half. Half of it goes up, and half of it goes down, and it's for bicycles and pedestrians. And you put Segways on there, you're gonna have trouble. And you're gonna have trouble all over the city. That doesn't mean they can't go down the streets. Mr. Ridgeway, you were correct. I listened to the same program you did, and I didn't have three screaming children in my room. And they also limited, in Washington, DC, the use of Segways to residents 16 years old and up. They don't allow youngsters on these things. So that there is a mechanical problem. We, as an association, have a policy, no mechanical devices. We support no mechanical devices on the boardwalk and other parts of the city where we will run into pedestrians. And I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you'll pass this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Craig Morissette, and I'm a homeowner on the Peninsula. Mobility devices, I'm very intrigued with the technology, and I may well own something, if not a Segway, sometime throughout my lifetime. And we may find, two or three decades down the road, looking at an ordinance like this, we may all get a chuckle from it, because these devices may well be as plentiful as bicycles someday. But at this point, today, and looking into the near future, I think this is a good ordinance, and I'll tell you why. You know, if anybody's walked the Peninsula for any number of years, you've probably been hit by a bicycle. Now, it's happened to me twice, usually at dusk, and twice from behind. And in both of those encounters, I actually came out better than the bicycle did. The rider was high, his center of gravity was high up, and the bicycle was unstable when he hit me. And in the other case, I can't remember if it was a he or a she that hit me. But one ended up in the sand, the other one was on the concrete, and they were much worse off than I. In the case of these mobility devices, and in particular, Segways, the mass is low, and these are self-stabilizing devices. It's not like a bicycle, when you hit someone, you're unstable and you're going to fall, and that limits the damage to the pedestrian. I can't imagine being hit by one of these, especially if you've got batteries down close to the ground. And again, they're self-stabilizing. So staff should be commended. The ordinance is a good one. I do agree with the changes recommended by the Central Newport Beach Community Association, and I would urge you to pass the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for everybody in the audience, this is a study session. We don't pass ordinances, nor do we even take actions. We just recommend actions to the Council for future discussions. So, but staff was good enough to go ahead and prepare the ordinance, so we can just look at it.
Good afternoon. My name is Shauna Boucher. I live at 720 West Oceanfront on the Balboa Peninsula. I've lived there for almost 10 years, and I have a child that resides with me. Each year, as the population of our area grows, and the beauty and attractiveness of the Peninsula is discovered, the traffic on the boardwalk has become increasingly congested. I've observed an increased presence of families, most of them with children, who've come to the Peninsula to spend the day at the beach. I've witnessed numerous bicycle accidents and pedestrian accidents out in front of my home. The presence of skateboards, razors, roller baits, and motorized scooters has made walking down the boardwalk at times a safety hazard. This applies not only to people, but to those individuals that are walking their pets as well. As a mother, my primary concern is one of safety. I'm concerned for our kids. I'm concerned for individuals who might not be able to protect themselves, such as the elderly, and also for pets and other individuals. I feel that other mothers would have this same concern. I feel that the acceptance of yet another mode of transportation, such as the Segway, will negatively contribute will negatively contribute to the already existing problem of congestion and traffic on the boardwalk and present an additional safety hazard to the residents and the visiting public. And I appreciate very much this opportunity to share my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? Come on up.
My name is Max Liskin. I appreciate all the work that the city has put into reviewing this situation, but I'd still like to make some points based on comments made today. I was brought up to be honest, and I find certain things about the presentations today that make me question the motives of people. And that's a sentiment which I think is shared by, that's been shared in the press. There was an article in the New York Times, which people say is a liberal paper, which refers to Segways, "In Halls of Albany, A Decidedly Un-squeaky Pair of Wheels Gets Grease." And that speaks to the legislative process and how Segway has gone about it. In a publication as conservative as the Wall Street Journal, the language is, "That's why Segway LLC, the company, came and set up to market this device, has delayed sales to the general public until this fall, while an army of lobbyists blanket the country pushing for new state laws permitting Segways on sidewalks." When a good idea is a good idea, I think the public gets it. Segway, to the point that there are not many of them now, the founder stated in a book that he thought that this would be the fastest company ever to reach a billion in sales. As of a recall done in 2003, Segway has only sold 6,000 devices. The question for Segway is public acceptance of this device. I don't think Newport should be a testbed for it, and if the company does not survive, we'd be left with devices that people don't know how to service. And that's a very real concern. As far as, and this is something, again, honesty, we have a letter that was presented today by a good neighbor of mine, a person who I like, the Remleys. And Mrs. Remley speaks about Charles and him being disabled with cartilage. For a living, Mr. Remley paints homes. I don't understand the connection. I think we have to be honest. If a person wants a Segway, say they want a Segway. Don't hide behind safety issues, don't hide behind anything. If you want something, be truthful. I'm gonna be truthful today and say, I came to Newport for quality of life. Quality of life, to me, means enjoying the boardwalk, not being disturbed. And yes, perhaps a Segway today isn't something that disturbs me, but I look at what Segway has done in their brief history, and if you look at their all-terrain model, it is fully capable and permitted to go on the beaches of Newport. And then I turn to Mr. Delita, who says, "We have a new device, and it's energy-friendly, and we should look to the future." We have the future in Newport. We have beautiful, unmolested beaches. Why do we want to be the people that bring Segways in, which are energy-efficient? Yes, they are. But in Newport, we have a beautiful area that doesn't allow motorized vehicles. The rest of the country should be so lucky. So why are we gonna disturb that equilibrium? I don't have a good answer for that. And I will tell you, as a businessperson, I got to live on the boardwalk through my hard work. And I bought my house, and I pay about $20,000 a year in taxes. And when I look at the revenues that a store like Segway will throw off, and I think of all the people who come here and who might not come here and buy houses, I think the revenues and the taxes this city gets from the Segway store will be a pittance compared to the tax revenues you derive from the homeowners. I'm glad to pay those taxes. I love this town, and I'm gonna protect it and fight for it vehemently, because it took me a long time to find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Tom LaLachlan. I live at 420 East Bay Avenue here in Balboa. Couple of points, the prior speaker, I don't quite understand what liberal or conservative has to do with the issue of Segway. I've owned my Segway for some three years prior to Dick and Jim opening their business here on Balboa Boulevard. Contrary to the prior speaker, I think it's wonderful to have something other than a t-shirt shop or a tattoo parlor. They're wonderful guys, they are neighborhood-friendly. I belong to pier-to-pier. They don't speak for me on this. Todd, two years ago, I came off the, I was on my Segway. You got through with the Balboa Island Parade with your family, you got out of the car, and you made a comment to me at that time. I was on my Segway, I'd just gotten, and you said, "We're gonna take care of those." And I thought you were joking. I truly did. So you did encounter one-on-one at that time, you may not recall. So I just wanna say that my golden years, I chose Newport Beach to live, and I bought a Segway for the pleasure, for just going to and from the marketplace. And I didn't plan on anything like this, and I'm just a gas addict. But that's my true sense of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, my name's Chuck Remley. I live at 101 East Balboa Boulevard. And I'm the arthritic hip painter that is referred to. I have a handicap placard that was issued to me by the DMV of California. I'm legally disabled. Pretty honest. Pretty honest. But my reputation has been impugned before you, this afternoon. Let me say that you have a letter from me, as well as one from my wife, in your packet. A number of years ago, the, some folks would like to have had a junior lifeguard headquarters built at the base of Balboa Pier. And someone up on the dais, and I can't remember who it was, said, "This is a solution looking for a problem to solve." And I think that that's where we are today with the Segway regulations. Mr. Rosansky, at the previous study session, said, "Let's take a wait-and-see attitude. Let's see, let's see what happens." We've gone through a summer, no incidents, as near as I can determine. There's only, at the most, half a dozen, probably only about seven or eight in the town. At 12 and 1/2 miles an hour, which is the top speed of the vehicle, you can't ride it on the street. If an ordinance is passed, I don't know where people who ride these for recreation are gonna ride them. On the boardwalk, we have a number of problems, and most people seem to be referring to bicycle problems this afternoon. Nobody refers to actual Segway problems. Bicycle problems, skateboard problems, Surrey problems, perhaps. It seems to me that this really is some kind of a solution looking for a problem. And so I would urge you not to do anything further with this ordinance. I'd urge you to take a wait-and-see attitude. Let it give it a year. What is it gonna hurt? Why would we burden our books with one more ordinance that, quite frankly, is not enforced? Skateboards, motorized scooters, bicyclists going more than eight miles an hour. Three days in a row this last summer, I sat at a point at Balboa Boulevard, I mean, at Island Avenue and the boardwalk, and I counted things. Now, I didn't count Surrys. I'm sorry about that. But there were 15 skateboarders on Thursday, between 12, Thursday, August 4th, between 12:30 PM and 1:30 PM, there were 15 skateboarders went by that location on the boardwalk. There were 33 cyclists going faster than nine miles an hour. There were no Segways. On Friday, August 5th, between 1:00 PM and 2:00 PM, there were 10 skateboarders that went by that location. There were 49 cyclists going faster than nine miles an hour, but there were no Segways. On Saturday, August 6th, from 11:30 PM to 12:30 PM, there were 10 skateboarders went by that location, 54 cyclists going more than nine miles an hour, and there were two Segways, two Segway riders. It was the same Segway, but two people were riding it during that time period. It seems like we don't need another ordinance for that area. Thank you.
Mr. Remley, excuse me, the reason why you're pointing out skateboards is that there's a prohibition of riding skateboards on the sidewalk, is that right?
That's correct. And it's also a prohibition against riding bicycles more than eight miles an hour.
How did you determine whether they were going faster than eight miles an hour?
In a 45-foot span, if it takes longer, if it takes shorter than three seconds, you're going more than nine miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like a response from the police regarding the viability of these on our roadways, alleyways, more importantly, and how the motor vehicle code applies to these. So sometime, Tom, you're at, because you're the only one in the audience.
Let's deal with it right now.
Okay.
Public comment's still open.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council, the--
You have to give your name.
Tom Gagey, I'm sorry, Police Department. The vehicle's described under 467, the vehicle code is a pedestrian device, but as such, could be ridden or operated on a portion of the highway similar to a bicycle. So prohibiting them in certain areas, the city wouldn't prohibit them necessarily from alleys or from low-speed roadways.
So help me out on the peninsula, would they, could they go down the boulevard then, or just in the alleys?
Technically, you could ride them on the side of the roadway, adjacent to the parked vehicles. It would certainly be safer in the alleys.
Or on West Bay Avenue, plus you--
Yes, sir.
Could they, because that's a pedestrian, I mean, that's a residential street 25 miles an hour.
Yes, sir.
So they're legal there?
Yes.
And are they governed by the vehicle code?
Yes, to the extent that they're described as a pedestrian.
Really? So if, hold on a second, if you're 12 years old, you can ride one?
With regard to the Segway, I'm not aware of an age limit. I don't know if there's something that would prohibit a youngster from riding one.
But are electric motor scooters are governed by the vehicle code, and you do, in fact, give tickets to kids who are under 16?
Yes.
And they're actually slower than the Segways, some of them.
In some cases, yeah.
Yeah, they're, it's a mixed bag.
Yes. It gets complicated in terms of some of the microcycles and these types of conveyances, in terms of definition, and it does, when they don't meet the threshold of some vehicle descriptions, are prohibited from the roadway. The Segway, because of the pedestrian-type definition, would allow it in certain portions of the roadway.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that as far as bike lanes are concerned, that the Segways could go in bike lanes, similar to a bicycle, but does the section of vehicle code that allows bicycles to take a lane of traffic if there's insufficient room for them to be out of a lane of traffic apply to a Segway?
I don't know. I'd need to study that further.
Because that's one of the ordinances that a lot of people are not too aware of. If you have a narrow roadway, rather than the bicycle squeezing to one side, they are allowed to come out into the center of the lane and take a full lane, I believe, if I remember correctly.
I've never heard that.
Tom, are you aware of any accidents or incidents with these Segways in town so far?
In looking at it over the summer, we had no accidents or incidents resulting in injury. We had a few complaints, but it was very, very limited.
And what was the nature of the complaints?
A question as to whether they were legal on the oceanfront sidewalks, and a question related to some commercial flyer distribution on the beach at low tide involving the Segways. And under those conditions this summer, they weren't prohibited from the environment.
Okay, so, thank you.
Are bicycles prohibited from riding on the beach?
Bicycles can ride on the beach.
Okay, so that a Segway is on the beach too, so that they would be similar to bicycles?
Could, yes.
Any other questions, officer?
Great, thanks.
I want to see Mr. Webb ride his bike on the beach.
Come on up.
I've got one, and it doesn't work.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Brown. I do not live on the peninsula. I live in Dover Shores of Newport Beach. My parents have had a house on Balboa Island for 30 years, so I've been coming down here as a kid for a long time. To my knowledge, I'm one of the probably five owners of a Segway way before these guys came into business. I actually looked at going into business with a Segway, and this is one of the reasons I didn't, because of understanding that government might get involved and restrict any kind of a business. So I look at it from that point of view and say, that's unfortunate that this council is looking at any way to restrict a vehicle that is friendly to our environment. We have a gas problem already, and then we're only talking about very few numbers at this time. Now granted, if they get popular and we start getting crowded walkways and things like that, I'm all for looking at some sort of a, let's get along ordinance, so we can all be happy. You know, automobiles were considered very dangerous at one point, too. So any new technology that comes out, I understand that it's gonna be difficult to adopt right away, but under the circumstances of the few numbers we have, I agree with the statement that was made originally. I think this is not a waste of time, but there could be better use of your gentleman's time and our time also. It was mentioned about safety factor. I only brought my son here because one of the things that I do when I demonstrate my Segway is I run over his foot on purpose, and I've done that many, many times. The Segway was designed, very low pressure in the wheels, so if you do run over somebody's foot, it doesn't hurt them. There's all these safety features built in this. Have any one of you guys ever ridden a Segway? One, two. Okay, did you find it unsafe? Did you find it difficult to operate after about five or 10 minutes?
Not that much.
Okay, and that's under, of course, opinion. And as the officer said also, there has been no recorded accidents so far. I am also a competitive bicycle racer, and I can tell you that a bicycle that has been around a lot longer than Segways is 10 times as dangerous than these Segways. And if anything, we should be looking at ordinances against bicycles on those particular roadways. So that for you to consider, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ken Drelaschak. I lived out on Balboa Peninsula on East Ocean Boulevard down near the wedge, and I'm a member of the Balboa Peninsula Point Association. We've discussed the Segway issue at the Point Association meetings, and most of our constituents will be very happy to see the ordinance that's being proposed, especially those on the oceanfront boardwalk, because they've expressed a lot of concerns about the safety and the issues that have been discussed here today about safety in narrow spots where a lot of traffic exists. I'd like to have you consider one other issue, though, and that would be to ban them on sidewalks in general. I can't tell from this reading whether or not the sidewalks in our area are prohibited. But let me just point out that down at the end of the peninsula, we are not really a seasonal neighborhood. There are lots of people that come to our neighborhood all the time, especially down near the wedge. We have surfboards there every day, all day. We have lots of people walking up and down the sidewalks in that area, proceeding to the beach to take photographs, to look at the sunsets, to chase the grunge, and do all that stuff. And the sidewalks are full, not only during the high season, but for a large part of the other portion of the year, too. There is no way for any of the normal sidewalk traffic to be able to exist, to coexist with Segways. So I would not only be happy to see the ordinance enacted the way it's shown right now, but for additional consideration for banning them on sidewalks in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jim Hedley. I'm co-owner of Segway Orange County, a store, one of my-- one of my stores is here on the Balboa Peninsula. I'm not going to take long, because as Mayor Heffernan's mentioned, it's a real-time-consuming issue, and I'd like to think that enough time has been spent on it. I just would like to say that I think the council has worked hard on preparing an ordinance. As I told you all in April, I'm really not against having regulations, except just for the sake of regulation. There has not been an incident. There hasn't been an accident. There hasn't been an injury. All there is, is fear. There are seven Segway owners in Newport Beach. In looking at the ordinance, at the proposed ordinance, I would ask for a little bit of leniency regarding the on-season versus off-season, perhaps if there is an issue with a crowd in a certain area at a certain time. I, as a businessman, am probably going to stay away from that with a large group of tourists anyway. However, I've been here since January in renovating my building, and I know for a fact that in my area, that the crowds are diminished during certain times of the year. So I'd like to submit a suggestion that if the ordinance can be amended to allow for more use in some of the boardwalks and fun zones and touristy attractions during the off-season, after Labor Day, before Memorial Day. I would appreciate that consideration. And the only other thing that I would ask would be that sometimes I have a small tour. Many times I have only two or three people on a tour. Once, I even took one person. And I would like to ask that in those instances, that I would be allowed to run a tour with one tour guide, and I wouldn't be required to have to have two tour guides. Probably wouldn't be cost-effective for me. I would like to stay in business, and I would like to continue to be a good neighbor. And just thank you for your time. I'm sorry this issue took so long. I really am.
Thanks. Anybody else want to speak on this? Thanks.
My name is Marilyn Hendrickson. I live at four sixteen Fiat Zalito, and I have lived there since nineteen sixty-one. At one time, I was chairman of the Bike Committee in this city for seven years. I am not at all unfamiliar with the oceanfront sidewalk, believe me. That is some of the most hard-fought-over real estate in town. I am also very aware of the purpose it serves recreationally all year for many of us. I used to ride a bike there. I don't anymore now. I'm a pedestrian. I walk the peninsula there at least once or twice a week with friends. My children all went to Newport Elementary. They rode their bikes there, then they rode to Enson, then Harbor. I'd like to see it safe for all of us pedestrians, for the young people coming along, and for the seniors. I've enjoyed that sidewalk. I've enjoyed serving this city. I'm not against new technology. I've had to learn to use a computer. But please consider this carefully. Give it time. Don't get on a slippery stool with new technology. Thank you.
Sure, it's still open. Come on down.
My name's Frank Pike. I live at eight eleven Kings Road. I've had my Segway for about a year and had a lot of fun riding it. Only one point I'd like to make is based on the study session from last time. The police chief said there hadn't been any problems with Segways, so I hope that you don't make any restrictions. I much prefer for safety to ride on the sidewalk rather than the street. Unfortunately, I live in kind of a poverty pocket. There's none having the sidewalks or streetlights for that matter, but that's another issue, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. If you want to come up, now's the time. I'm going to, thanks.
I'm Paul Evans. Live at three thirty-three Onyx on Balboa Island. Couple of you know me. I don't know if that's good or bad, but anyway. I've had my Segways since they first were released in March of two thousand, I don't know, two or three. And I didn't ride it over here, because you may not know that they don't have the charge that'll go all the way over here and back. I did bring her over in the car if you want to go out and ride. There are two out there now. I will say, I try to be a really good citizen, and when you buy a Segway, Dean Kamen, the inventor, requires that every prospective purchaser have about a two-hour safety orientation that includes a video in which he speaks to the new buyers and says, remember, you're an ambassador. Be a good citizen. And I try to do that. I don't go on the sidewalks, except like Coast Highway Bridge, because the bike lanes are narrow and the traffic's crazy. On Balboa Island, I'm in the alleys, on the street. Never go on the sidewalks there. Wheel it up to Park, perhaps, but not, don't ride it on the sidewalk. I go to Fashion Island. I stay out of the way. I'm in the bike lanes or on the wide sidewalk by nursery there where you just never see a pedestrian anyway. And I think if people are good citizens and they realize that this is, it's new technology, but it's no bigger than a baby carriage. It'll stop faster than most skateboarders or rollerbladers. It goes a maximum of twelve and a half miles an hour. Sure, they're eighty-three pounds, but I have yet to run into anybody. I have yet to have anybody run into me, and I think it's part of being a defensive driver that you have to be with a car as well. So just because there's something new about them doesn't mean that they have inherently problematic issues with pedestrians. I think it's more the person riding it that could be the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to speak, now's the time. I'm going to close public hearing. Okay, I'm going to close public hearing, bring it back. Mr. Ridgeway?
Thank you.
No, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I just kind of answer the question about whether they're being banned on other sidewalks? The way the ordinance is drafted, it's intended to ban the Segways from the places where I think the council's heard the most concern about, along the boardwalk and the bayfronts and Edgewater Plaza. It's not intended to automatically ban them from any other sidewalks or any other location, except for along the beach, unless the council would adopt a resolution to that effect. So what it does is identifies a few places where I think the most concern has been raised about introducing another type of electric device in an area where there's already a lot of activity going on, and not, and reserving to the council the ability to adopt a resolution later if it proves to be a problem on other sidewalks or other areas of the city.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? Obviously, I'm going to support moving this to council at a later date, but I want to make quite a few observations and comments at today's hearing, because I will go to Mr. Remley first, only because I think he's correct in his observation about bicycles and skateboarders. He didn't mention the Surrys, which was nice of him, because they do exist on the boardwalk, as do the three-wheelers, and I have talked to the police department numerous times over the years. I know they don't want to enforce this, because they want to deploy manpower elsewhere. The issue, and I do think the bicyclists, certainly the speeding bicyclists, are probably more dangerous than the Segways. I think the current, the last speaker, I actually, certainly, there's nothing I can take at issue with him. He takes on the role of ambassador, and he does ride on, ride wide roadways, and tries to stay in the alleys, and to all those Segway riders, that is always an option. We have residential streets. We really are a residential community. The issue here is the boardwalk, and it's pure physics. It's the number of people that exist on that boardwalk on, certainly during the summer, there is no more room on the boardwalk. There is no room even for walkers sometimes. And let me talk about the speed for a second. It self-regulates because it is so crowded, and it self-regulates downward to a walking pace, quite candidly. Even the speeding bicyclists can't speed on the weekends, and there is enough peer group pressure from the citizens to prevent the skateboarders from coming in on the weekend. And I submit to each one of you, and I think you're very sincere in your desires here, you Segway owners, do you really, for the seven of you, we have two hundred signatures here, and I can see this is only the tip of the iceberg, the iceberg on the peninsula, and I see neighbors' signatures on all sides of me, and not one of them has talked to me about this. But do you really want to come down to the peninsula where you're not wanted, even if we don't pass this? And I submit to my other councilmen, do you really want these things on your sidewalk in the port streets? I think not. I think, quite candidly, it's a physical, it's a physical, it's a physical structure. They're too big. They occupy too much space. If I'm in any of my neighborhoods in Newport Beach residentially, I would ride them on the streets. I wouldn't be riding them on the sidewalk. We have lots of families with lots of baby carriages, small kids. Even if it's not crowded, let's go to the other neighborhoods. It isn't crowded, but quite candidly, those sidewalks are used, wherever we have sidewalks. And I do understand cliff driving Kings Road. We don't have them, so you arbitrarily will have to ride them on the roadway. On West Bay, where I live, we have driveways that come out, and all of our, all of our sidewalks are actually, every thirty-five feet, you hit a drive apron. So what do people do? They walk in the street. They don't even use the sidewalk. And our sidewalks are incredibly narrow. We're an older part of town. As everybody knows who lives on the peninsula, we were incorporated in nineteen oh six. The grid, the streets, the sidewalks were designed to the standards back in nineteen oh six. It has not changed, quite candidly. The alleys are available for your Segways. The streets are available. Admittedly, the Balboa Boulevard, I probably wouldn't want to go out there. Do I think your Segways are safe? I think you've made a reasonable case that they probably are, but physically, they just don't fit on the boardwalk. And if I'm one of these other councilmen, I don't want them on my sidewalks, to be honest with you. So I would encourage us to come forward, and, you know, if, I'm sure Mr. Webb has some comments about the handicap, and I guess we can look at that as it occurs. But these Segways seem to have a tremendous commercial application in warehouses. And if I'm at the Pentagon, I don't know if anybody's ever walked the halls of the Pentagon. Yeah, you know what I'm saying. What a great vehicle to have. You know, you can actually take small cars down those hallways. The only problem is, in the Pentagon, they are actually elbow-to-elbow and shoulder-to-shoulder with people. So to be honest with you, they wouldn't even work there. And they probably, they work well in Washington, D.C., because you have large, and they were designed back when the Capitol was built as large, open sidewalks. But I submit to you, in the community at large, even where I was raised in L.A., I would not want these on the sidewalk. Residentially, put them on the street, leave them out there. They do go twelve and a half miles an hour. On the boardwalk on any given day in the summertime, you couldn't go twelve and a half miles an hour. Cannot. Matter of fact, you could probably only go a couple miles an hour, because again, just the amount of people regulates the speed. So I think there is a commercial application. The man who invented them, I think, was looking for commercial application, probably residence or recreation, but the recreation, as you can see, these things have been around for a long time, just has never materialized. And I think there's good reason. Even with all the lobbyists that they've used to make this a, defined as a pedestrian, it still is not catching on. I think Mr. Brown was very honest. I do, he feels these are very safe, and I'm probably convinced they're relatively safe. Again, they're certainly safer than a speeding bicyclist. They're certainly safer than any of our skateboarders, for those of us who are down on the boardwalk and see the anger of every citizen when one of those guys come by, and the ire and arguments or the comments that come out. And that's what's going to happen with the Segways. So I just think, you know, why would you want that? But I would urge that this come back, and I would actually ask that it be expanded to prevent it from the sidewalks, unless you guys really want them on your sidewalks in your neighborhoods. But I don't think they fit. In West Newport, I don't know anywhere where they would fit. They barely fit on the street, because they're all one-way streets. And we have that same issue in the peninsula in a number of places. So it's just, the physical size of them is just too much for the amount of usage of our boardwalk, Edgewater, and Buena Vista. So those are my comments. I think everybody here was very straightforward, and I am convinced that they're probably safe, but they're just too big. It's like sitting next to a big person on an airplane. Do you really want that? No, you don't. You know, okay, never mind. But I want to say, let me go one step further. I was at one of the restaurants here, and somebody lit up a cigarette. I thought the whole restaurant would, you know, come unglued, you know? I couldn't believe that somebody did that. The peer group pressure on that one person was tremendous. So again, that's how I feel. I think this ordinance should come forward.
Chisellech?
Do we know if any other cities, strictly beach cities, like Long Beach or down in Venice area, Naples, have adopted these kinds of ordinances?
I was just looking at Dan. I don't think we've checked of any other cities, or do you know?
Excuse me, the only city that I'm aware that's banned them is San Francisco. Most of the other cities that I've talked to are taking a wait-and-see attitude.
Except because they go too fast downhill?
Do you know if any of these cities have had, like, complaints or problems? I mean, I'm just thinking like Venice, they have that big boardwalk along the front of Belmont Shores, areas like that.
Yeah, I've not heard anything from any of the other communities, but I would be happy to double check.
Yeah, if we set this for a hearing, I'd like to know that.
Yeah, Santa Monica as well, I believe. They, I'm not sure whether ordinance goes one way or another, but I think they have one there.
Mr. Mayor, Webb?
I guess that, I think that Councilmember Ridgeway made a perfect case for the Segway on the boardwalk when he talks about the number of people and the speed regulates the walking. If you're concerned about a large group of people, a Segway fits in much better on a large, crowded walkway than a bicycle does, because once you slow a bicycle down, you have, you either have to get off and walk it, which means if you're walking beside your bicycle, you take up twice as much room as if you were on the bicycle. But you can't operate a bicycle safely at very low speeds, because you lose the ability to steer. Segways can go exceptionally slow, and they can turn three hundred and sixty degrees and affect the footprint of the Segway. I, too, agree that we've waited six months. We haven't seen a significant increase in the number of Segways in the area. We haven't seen any problems. I don't think that we need to put together a resolution, an ordinance, that regulates something that isn't a problem. If you've ridden on a Segway, you see how rapidly they stop. You see how easily they maneuver. As far as running into somebody is concerned, I'm sure that you can come up with a worst-case scenario where somebody would get hurt. I would much rather have a Segway run into me than a bicycle that's going even eight miles an hour, because of the momentum and all of the sharp, angular, pointy-type things that are on a bicycle. So I feel that we are, again, over-regulating a problem that doesn't exist, and feel that- we should not adopt this ordinance. And by the way, I wouldn't mind having them on sidewalks in my neighborhood. I think that if we prohibit them from everywhere, on sidewalks of any type, that we are, in effect, prohibiting them from the city because they really don't belong in the street. They can't, they go too slow and are not able to coexist with cars. That's my thoughts.
I'll just weigh in here real quick. I mean, I'm also not really convinced of the dire need to regulate these things at this point in time. Certainly, if we do move forward, I would like to see a carve-out for disabled folks, especially someone who has a placard and has a card from the state that says that they are disabled. The age restriction someone mentioned might not be such a bad idea as well. I think because of the cost of these things, and that's probably why they're not as popular as maybe the Segway people had hoped, maybe that will change as the technology advances, the cost will come down. But, you know, as wealthy of a city as we are, I don't see parents handing out segways for their kids all over town. So maybe that's also self-limiting. I would be in favor of a ban on the segways where we only permit pedestrians at this point in time. And I believe, for instance, Balboa Island, the walkways around Balboa Island do not allow bicycles. So anywhere bicycles are prohibited, I would prohibit a Segway as well. But, you know, to me, the bicycle is not, is probably a more dangerous vehicle. And if we're concerned about safety, then let's address safety. Let's not address segways, let's address safety. And if bicycles on the boardwalk are not safe, then we should be talking about making that a pedestrian, two-legged pedestrian only. And so let's look at the problem, not other extraneous factors that are not the problem. So I guess that would be my position.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I had a question and thought before, I'll just bring it up. Is there anything required in liability insurance or anything like that, like we have on automobiles? I mean, this is a motorized vehicle, if you hit somebody, is that considered?
There's nothing in the state legislation requiring any kind of insurance. The only restrictions from the state would be reflectors on the front, back, and sides, a light if you're riding at night, and a sound emitting device to warn folks that you're approaching. That's the only restrictions in the state law.
How about these helmets that we have to have on bicycles?
No restrictions for helmets.
Okay, thank you.
You know, a quick follow-up to that question for Robin. Do we, as a city, bear any liability if we do permit these things on our roads or sidewalks or wherever?
No.
Thank you.
All right, everybody weighed in?
Just one last comment as to the technology. I think it's great technology, but these are not transportation vehicles for purposes of going to and from any place. Maybe there's a few exceptions for people who live relatively close to a restaurant, but Mr. Evans stated he can't even get from Balboa to here.
Good, or like they do that?
Oh, okay, you can come one way. I have a new electric car that I got on Sunday, and my kids wanted to know why I couldn't go across the country. It's gas and electric, and I tried to explain to them why, but anyhow. That's, you know, the technology for batteries is certainly extrapolating to the automobile industry, but to this industry, I think it has unlimited application.
All right, what will be next?
Well, I would like to have this come forward.
Okay, we have one to have it come forward? Who supports Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, I'd like to see it come forward, but only as to restricting pedestrian, where we currently restrict bicycles and other types of vehicles, and only allow pedestrians. And I don't mean the definite pedestrian where the state has defined this as a pedestrian vehicle, or this vehicle as a pedestrian use, but where we just allow people walking, basically. I would be in favor of that.
Okay, so you say where you can walk, these should be prohibited? Where you're only permitted?
It's such a contest.
No, 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 this is not a debate.
It's not a debate, exactly, at least not in the audience. The areas in town where we restrict bicycles and those types of vehicles, I guess I would be in favor of restricting this as well, because I would like to preserve those as walking-type areas.
Good, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like a clarification, and maybe the attorney's office can answer this question, is I believe that bicycles are prohibited from all sidewalks in town unless they are specifically allowed.
I believe that's true, and that's similar to how we've drafted this. In other words, we have banned bicycles unless they are adopted, unless there's a resolution allowing them in a certain location on a sidewalk. This is the opposite, they will be permitted in everywhere unless there's a resolution adopted specifically prohibiting them.
And I think that there are--
I think that's how skateboards work as well.
I believe there are certain areas in the community where we consistently have had problems, that we have signed no bicycles, and the Balboa Island signage is there, and I believe the same thing occurs in the Fun Zone area as well as probably on Edgewater Place. So that there are places within the city where specific signs prohibiting bicycles have been placed, but they have not been placed on sidewalks all over town. And I don't believe the police department regularly enforces bicycle riding on sidewalks, like kids who are going from neighbor's house to neighbor's house on the sidewalk. But technically speaking, they're breaking the law.
Okay, Mr. Selich?
I guess I really don't see the necessity to have the ordinance at this point in time. The, you know, it sounds like other cities are taking a wait-and-see attitude on it. If we only have six of them in town, I'm not sure why we need to adopt an ordinance. I can see that if they ever reach the point where they were proliferating all over the place, that there might be problems with them. But to, you know, to adopt an ordinance, I mean, if we're not enforcing the four-wheel bicycle ordinance, I mean, you know, how many tickets are we going to be giving to six people in town? So, you know, it might be a good idea for sometime in the future if these things ever catch off, catch on, which I'm dubious that they ever will, myself, but it just seems like an ordinance that we don't need right now. I just don't see where there's the need for it.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I support, I think he's got a good point.
Okay, you say no, Mr. Selich says no, Mr. Webb says no. What do I say? I say what I started to say. I don't think it's that much of a problem. I'm a wait-and-see guy. So I would say, bring me a problem, and then we'll fix it. I don't say significant, I don't see that as being the problem with safety in particular areas in question. Anything else?
I would just make one last comment, if you would indulge me, and that is, to the owner of the Segway dealership and to the owners of segways, your ambassadors understand that the citizens on the peninsula probably don't like you, or like the segways, they like you, but I think just, I'm just making the comment, just use--
I can buy this car.
No, no, I know, I don't want to do that. But they don't like the segways, so let's try our best to live in harmony together. No, actually, we like all of you. I didn't mean it that way.
Okay. I conclude that matter. City manager, the second matter, can you give us the update on that?
The emergency warning system, we're going to ask for a continuation of that and bring that back with everything that happened with Hurricane Katrina. We think there's some renewed interest here, and we want to come back and talk about an all-hazard, you know, evacuation plan and how we would deal with just any kind of emergency situation.
Well, I think, speaking with Chief Riley, that there's a broader spectrum of things that we want to be concerned with. It's kind of a direct-off outgrowth of Katrina. And that is sort of in flux right now, because all those reports are coming in, how things actually worked in dire straits, that Katrina show, Mississippi, Louisiana, et cetera. So we're going to wait on that. And with that in mind--
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say one thing, though, regarding Katrina, and we'll get into this later. There's been a lot of debate as to the response or lack of it, as far as New Orleans and the Gulf states. Whenever we do disaster preparedness exercises here at the local level, you know, one of the first things that's always said is that you're, we expect to be on our own for 72 hours. If a disaster hits, earthquake or whatever, we expect that it would be so substantial that it would affect a huge area outside of Newport Beach, and that we need to protect and do for our residents in the first 72 hours before we would get very much help from state or federal agencies.
So is that the direction when this comes back? Is that type of three-day standalone?
That's something that disaster preparedness people all over the nation will preach, that you need to develop a disaster preparedness plan for those first 72 hours, instead of expecting some immediate help from the outside.
Okay, any comment from city council members on this? Mr. Webb?
Our drill is, is it next week?
It is next week, I think it's Wednesday.
Can council members come and observe?
Council members can come and observe. We haven't planned that into the disaster, you know, exercise, but that is certainly available.
Actually, that brings up a good point, if I may interject here. I've asked on several occasions, how come the council is not involved in this disaster preparedness? I mean, I assume that in a disaster, that we have some role to play, whether it's--
That's a good question, and we've talked about that at least two times in my six years here, as far as study sessions are concerned. But the council's role is very, very limited in a disaster. It is restricted to policy, it is restricted to taking actions as far as asking, requesting, officially requesting help from state and federal agencies, and it isn't involving setting priorities as far as who is going to get rescued, or the logistics, or anything like that.
No, I understand that, and maybe we need to know that, and maybe that's part of the reason of including us, and so we know what our role is to play. But what about emergency allocations of funds, or reallocating money, or things that, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm just ignorant of what the powers of the staff are in making those kinds of decisions in an emergency. But it's something to consider. I, you know, I've mentioned it a couple of times, I've mentioned it to the fire chief, I think, as well, and I just haven't seen anything done about it.
No, we just have not had that usual briefing where they walk through what happens if something happens. What's our role, what's their role? You might want to fire us all. They would reverse the rule, and you could be king.
I think we did have an exercise, maybe two years ago, that--
Yeah, we did, and that's it, you've not been briefed, and when they go right through, here's where it happens, here's the command center, here's our role, here's what--
Well, we have at least three new council members since then, and probably you're going to have more next November, so.
And the council members could come to just, if they come to observe, I think it might be real illuminating for you what everybody does, and how it works, and kind of what everybody's going through. And then maybe at that point in time, we might be able to, at some points in time, I guess, give you an idea.
Okay, but I'm sure in a disaster, just as they are down in New Orleans and Louisiana in general, and those states, as well as the federal government, people are looking to their leaders for answers and direction, and certainly, I think that would be the case here if we had a localized disaster, or even a larger disaster. And so I would like to know what my role is to play at that point in time, so that I don't have to say, well, I'm not exactly sure, I'll get back to you. I mean, that's not an acceptable answer.
That's a good point, and I think we can cover that as far as, including that in the all-hazard plan. When we talk about it, I think the first meeting in October, we're looking at coming back with that. But certainly, you're welcome to come to the exercise next Wednesday, and I'll email you as to when that is and where it is, and provide some information.
What's the scope of it? Could you give us a little idea what your scope of your disaster is?
No, because we don't let the employees know that. That's all a part of their reacting to--
So, but we're reacting to a disaster that occurs somewhere in the city, is what we're--
It could be a plane going down, it could be a tsunami warning, a three-hours warning, it could be, you know, just about anything. But that's part of the exercise, is if a real disaster would happen, you don't have any preparation, or very little preparation, and you have to respond immediately, so that's part of the test.
No, but I think before we, before we have, I think all-hazard disaster plan's going to be much broader, it's going to be much more detailed, and I would rather address Mr. Rosansky's question, I think it's very legitimate, that we have, I don't know who does, police chief, fire chief, tandem, come down and say, okay, here's what happens. I think we should do that sooner than later, I don't think we have to wait, because I think what is going to fall out for Katrina is going to be much more involved, and what we do in reaction to it will take time to assemble from all these points of information. I would like to sooner address Mr. Rosansky's comment, okay, since you're having a drill anyhow, okay, this is what happens, and just kind of, you know, sequentially list, because I think we should all know. Is that fine? I think sooner than better. We'll deal with the broader issue later, I'd like to deal with this issue sooner.
As I remembered, or seeing a couple of TV broadcasts where the mayor of New Orleans was the one being interviewed and asked a whole series of questions, it, we may not be necessarily involved, but we happen to be the ones that the press gloms onto and wants to get answers from, so that I guess we need to really perhaps go through some training ourselves on what our roles would be, maybe not necessarily in taking care of the disaster, but in being a voice to comfort our systems, our citizens, that our city is in charge, our city is accomplishing what we're supposed to be accomplished, and that we have a great group of people to work with.
And I think we need to put out some information along those lines in a newsletter, too.
All right.
Mayor, I just want to kind of take back my general invitation, and in order to avoid having this be indicated, some sort of a Brown Act meeting, we'd probably only be able to have three council members. But if there are three council members that would like to come and observe, maybe the newer ones that haven't been through that.
Can the other members be victims then?
Yeah, sure.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I mean, we can be there, we just can't discuss--
I know, I know, you wouldn't be discussing it, but you would be hearing and getting information, and then, I mean, this is a drill for staff's benefit to try and learn and spend a little bit more time fine-tuning our own procedures that we've had, and this is at least the fifth drill that I know that we've been through. And I don't know that there might not be an argument that there's a meeting going on.
Well, wait the argument. All right.
Why don't we notice it then, right now, and then it's all done?
Well, then you have the public, who is welcome, and they get to be with you.
But how are we welcome when we, then it doesn't occur in a specific spot, or--
No, we would meet at the police department, and that's where the exercise would be managed from.
Okay, all right, we'll deal with these in appropriate pieces, all right. Dealing, we're going to pass over that. Public comment is open, thanks.
W.R. Bill Dean, on this Segway issue, I found your discussions and your comments very interesting. One thing I did not intentionally mention, they're going to go away January the 1st, 2008, unless legislation is enacted, they will no longer be a pedestrian. I'm not about to go out and buy an $8,000, a $5,000 device, that I don't know how it's going to be recognized in the vehicle code come January the 1st, 2008. What I found most interesting in this legislation is these sections of the vehicle code, which have been changed. They already have the new sections in, which on that date, they revert back to. So I, following this and looking at it, I think everybody in your League of California Cities, and their comments, and the other associations, everybody's somewhat agreed. What impact is this going to have on us, the city, the county, the local agency? I think it'd be worthwhile to whoever monitors your legislation, particularly at the legal level. We're just completed our first year of a two-year session, maybe something's going to sneak through after the first of the year at the tail end, but certainly, 2007, January, I think this city does have an interest from your comments on what the legislature is trying to do. Thank you very much. One other comment, I have served for 21 years on a state commission, of which you folks have not, in my knowledge, taken advantage of, Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act. It's a permissive piece of legislation for public works, which will give you an informal bidding ordinance, allowing you to do work, but I assume now, everything over $35,000, you go out to a formal bid. It is permissive up to $125,000. I've taken the league's people, I've pounded on their head, I want that at a quarter of a million, but it's something I think you could benefit by, it would reduce some of your advertising expenses, and I'd be more than willing, now that I'm a full-time resident, after disappearing in '67 for two-year assignment, coming back in 37 years later. So I've helped where I came from, the county has opted into the program, there's-- There are several cities in the county, so I would be happy to meet with any of you and any staff at any time and see if there'd be any advantage to the city in maintaining our facilities. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
I'm Bill Kelly, live out on the peninsula. And I was just wondering, we're going to talk about the warning at another time because that's what I came here to talk about. I think it's something, we need some kind of a system in place where we can let people, at least out on the peninsula, know when we seriously have to evacuate. We had that problem with the tsunami warning, and it was during a council meeting, I don't even think you guys got the word, and half the peninsula had already evacuated and left. The other half was jammed in traffic out there, and no police, no fire anywhere in sight. So we really need to have some work on that. You know, just getting the word out to the people, some kind of an alarm, some kind of a notice, just to let them know when it's serious, and it has to happen quickly because people have to get off of this peninsula. If we have a tsunami, there won't be any buildings left on the peninsula unless there are towers. That's all I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
And by the way, this item is a direct response to the screen that said we're having a warning. I mean, I wanted to have a specific plan or at least address it so that we knew what we were doing. Great. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to close this. City attorney, you want to announce closed session?
Yes, we have a closed session with a review of the city manager, performance evaluation, and directions for negotiation for purchase of property.
Great. Thank you. We re-adjourn at 7:00.